Good evening, I'd like to call the May 28th, 2019 meeting of Matthews Board of Commissioners to order. First, we'll do a safety minute. If we need to leave the building, you will hear the alarm. We go out the door, go to the right to the stairwell down and out the front of the building, or you can go to the left to the back stairwell which will take you down into the parking lot behind the building. When you get to either one of those locations, please move away from the building so that emergency vehicles can get in without creating any hazards. There's a defibrillator out to the right side of the reception desk. It is working and available to us if we need that. I will make sure that we take a moment to remind everyone to push your chairs in. You folks out there won't need to, but everybody up here needs to. We seem to have a problem with that, so we're working on that individually. And also, if you have something on the floor, maybe push it under your chair or under the chair in front of you so if we have to get out, nobody's tripping on those things. Next item is the invocation. I'd like to turn to Commissioner Dement for that.
I invite those that wish to join me in prayer. My gracious heavenly Father, as we are one day past our national holiday of Memorial Day, we remain humbled by the remembrance of the multitude of lives that have been sacrificed for our great country. It reminds us of our responsibility as citizens to honor, preserve, and protect the freedoms we have, enjoy, and often take for granted. Freedom to have open government meetings, for all to speak, to worship and live wherever they choose. For these things, we thank you, God. We ask for your protection over those who are currently putting their lives at risk to keep our country free and safe. Here at home, we ask for the safety of our firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and our police officers. At the end of their workdays, please return them safely to their families. And now I ask you for your guidance as this board listens and makes decisions for this town on behalf of its citizens. Provide us with the wisdom, knowledge, and confidence to make the right decisions for today and for the future. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Pollinator Week. We have a number of pollinators and beekeepers in the crowd. Come on over here, Gretchen. We have a proclamation this evening. Today, when I came into the office, I opened up Bing and lo and behold, this picture was up there. So, I asked Lori to copy it and she's putting it up there as we make this presentation. And I thought it was appropriate. So proclamation in recognition of National Pollinator Week. Whereas pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas for decades, the town of Matthews has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, as well as wildlife habitats, and whereas the town of Matthews provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. Now therefore, I, Paul F. Bailey, Mayor of the Town of Matthews, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as National Pollinator Week in the Town of Matthews, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance. Gretchen, thank you very much for being here. I'll open this up so we can get a...
Okay, and so you will see this proclamation in the library?
Oh, in the library during the week of Pollinator, National Pollinator Week, that is June 17th through the 24th. You'll see this down in the library along with a pollinator educational display. Also, a little bit before the week, you will see us June 15th. We being Bee City USA, you'll see other people, other beekeepers there as well, but the big highlight usually on the 15th is at the farmer's market, we'll be there with a live observation so you'll be able to safely see the bees doing their work on a frame there as well. And one other place that you can witness pollinators is also at the Pollinator Garden in Country Place Pocket Park that is continuing to be expanded and enhanced under the guidance of Martha Kraus, who wasn't able to be here today. But she continues to love that space and expand it, but she has passed the reins on to me as the Chair for Bee City USA, Town of Matthews. And one last plug for it, if you want to continue to follow us year-round, see where we're at with our bee hives, have questions about what you can do for pollinators, you can find us on Facebook, it's Bee City USA, Town of Matthews.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great. How many beekeepers? How many beekeepers do we have here? I know we've got a couple up here. Is that all, just two? All right, the next thing we have is information on our Memorial Day activities. We are pleased to have Phil Maury here, who is the Chairman of the VFW Post, or Commander, excuse me, not Chairman, Commander of the VFW, American Legion. Okay, we'll get it right. They were very instrumental in many things that occurred over this past weekend, and I wanted Phil to come in and give us a presentation on all the events that occurred and what the results were, and even though it was hot, we survived, right? Come on up to the podium.
Thank you for inviting me this evening to talk about the recent Matthews Memorial Day Weekend. We are the American Legion, the only veterans group in Matthews, the only organic veterans group here. This weekend in short was fantastic. From the American Legion's perspective, it was memorable from the beginning until the end. We were really pleased and excited about how things went. We had record participation in our recurring events, and we had real good numbers for our first-time events. On an ever-improving basis, the Town of Matthews has become involved in supporting the American Legion's efforts to the extent possible. I'd like specifically to thank Mayor Bailey, the Commissioners, for their encouragement and participation in our events this past weekend and all the things that the American Legion is doing in Matthews. I'd like also to specifically thank our fire, police, and EMT community under the command of Chief Rob Kinnaberg and Chief Clark Pennington, who are very supportive of the American Legion and the veterans in town, and we have a special place in our heart for those that are our first responders, and we appreciate everything they do for us. I'd also like to thank our Town Manager, Hazen Blodgett, and specifically the Parks and Recs Department and the Community Center staff for their assistance this weekend. We just can't logistically handle this without their support, and so we appreciate that very much. The greater community also rallied behind us the whole weekend, providing wonderful support to the American Legion and to our town's veterans. Matthews Memorial Day Weekend actually began on Thursday, May 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. when Matthews Navant Medical Center puts on their annual awesome Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony, and it's a wonderful way to start the week, and they do a super job over there. Friday was National Poppy Day. The American Legion established the red poppy as the symbol for Memorial Day in the United States and also the symbol for honoring the war dead of our nation. And so, the federal government declared that the Friday before Memorial Day is National Poppy Day. We had tremendous success this year in distributing about 500 poppies throughout the community. People actively took them, they wore them everywhere, we were really pleased with that, and we're grateful to Bruegger's Bagel, Renfro's Hardware, the Town Hall, and the library, Seaboard, Temple Mojo, and Beer Temple for allowing us to put poppies there for distribution, and they went even a step further and allowed us to do a little fundraising there as well. It was very helpful to pay for some of this weekend's activities. So Friday was National Poppy Day, and we were distributing poppies throughout town. Friday and Saturday, we had a work tabletop in the hood room here featuring World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, history panels and artifacts on those. The feedback has always been that the quality has been outstanding. Attendance, however, has been a challenge for us, and we're going to look at that as to whether Friday's a good day, Saturday's a good day. I'll get final numbers on all these events tomorrow, unfortunately tomorrow morning we have a wrap-up meeting, but this was the one activity that I think we can improve upon. But the people that came enjoyed it and was meaningful, and a lot of people, especially the older veterans, the Korean veterans, saw a lot of their time in those pictures and they were moved by it. The younger veterans did request that if we were to do it again, that the more recent war eras be displayed, the Gulf War and Iraq-Afghanistan conflict, makes a lot of sense. There were parents here with young children. On Saturday, May 25th, we did our first Veterans Breakfast, Free Veterans Breakfast at the Masonic Lodge. We saw many first-time veterans, we were able to recruit new veterans from Matthews into our post, which was wonderful. Again, we're waiting on the final numbers, but we had a steady crowd over the two hours we were open. We're always very appreciative to the Matthews Masonic Lodge for allowing us to have that as our home, and to cook out of there and to entertain and have our meetings. So, there are a great bunch of guys over there at the Masonic Hall. The food that was left over, the breakfast food, we were able to donate to the fire department, and we're glad that they took it, and shouldn't be surprised if firemen liked their food. So Chief, I think you'll be getting more as we do more of these events. On Sunday, we had two separate, smaller remembrance ceremonies. We had our first one at Mount Moriah Baptist Church. They have veterans in their older cemetery there, and we felt it was important to go up there, and we were welcomed with open arms, and we had a short ceremony there, we had good attendance that morning. Many of our members went to services there, and we laid wreaths in addition to doing a quick service. And then we moved up to the old Matthews Cemetery where we did a similar thing. We had, the Friday before, we'd placed fresh flags on all the veterans' graves from the Civil War forward, so that looked sharp. And on Sunday, we went up there and commemorated all of the veterans on that sacred soil, but in particular, the namesake of our American Legion Post, Private Hook and Hooks and Private Oar, who were World War I soldiers who died in the conflict, didn't have any family, and so we took it upon ourselves to be their family and named the post after them. So that was very meaningful to us, and we appreciate the commission's support up there and as in all of our events. And then on Monday, the biggie was our Town Memorial Day Recognition Ceremony in Stumptown Park. It was very well-attended. I've only been in town for two years, but from what I hear, it was the best-attended ceremony in recent memory, and given the heat index and the humidity, we were really pleased. People said, you know, "I'm going to go out there and I'm going to stand for half an hour, and I don't care how hot it is to honor the guys that gave it all," and that was very, very meaningful, and we really appreciate that. During that ceremony, in addition to honoring the war dead of Matthews, which are in the back wall of the park, we also rolled out the first annual American Legion Elementary School Teacher of the Year. We, like me, have kids that are teachers, and the younger the kids, the less recognition they normally get. High school teachers seem to get whatever little recognition there is, so we at the American Legion said, "Hey, let's partner with Matthews Elementary." And we have, of course, as a core mission, good citizenship, and so we created a Hooks-Oar American Legion Post 235 Teacher Citizenship Award for the year, and we gave that first one out to teacher Annette Clary, who is very well-deserving. I don't know if anybody knows her, but she's a selfless servant of the community, and she was moved by it, and we were pleased. And so next year, at the request of the Mayor, we will include all of the Matthews Elementary Schools and have an award winner from all of that because it really is in our sweet spot. Not just the citizenship, but of course, children and youth are a big part of the American Legion program. All right, so next up for us will be Flag Day in June, then on to Fourth of July, then on to Matthews Alive, where we hope to march in that parade for the first time in a while, and then on to Veterans Day in November, where we'd like to replicate a similar service in the park, and would appreciate the support of everybody here for that. So on behalf of the 300 veteran members of Matthews Hooks-Oar American Legion Post 235, I'd like to express our gratitude for the level of support, respect, and care our wonderful Matthews community showed our veterans, our active-duty members, those deployed, and equally important and very often forgotten, our military families. So, it means a lot to us and we appreciate it. Thank you very much, we feel really good about the weekend.
Phil, I just want to recognize you and all the veterans. Everyone did a great job. I know it's a team effort to pull that together, but specifically, I want to thank you for your talents and your energy. Sometimes you make me exhausted when I watch you doing all this stuff, but thank you for your efforts and leadership in doing this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is items to be added to the agenda. I'll turn to the Town Manager. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I skipped the information on the Matthews Heritage Museum. I know, I get in trouble if I skip that one.
Hello, my name is Joe Brandenburg, and I'm one of the docents at the museum here in town. I'm here tonight representing the Hysterical, Historical, Historical Foundation, as well as the museum, and thanking this body for their support, the great institution we have here in town. You know, that little museum, even though it's small, really impacts the lives of our citizens. We have lots of schoolchildren that come through, and I'll share a personal story because I was given a guided tour to my grandson the other day, and we were going through the new Tank Town exhibit, and I mentioned a lady that Viola had actually gone to and studied here. She was, she went to up north and spent some time up there studying with Madame C.J. Walker. And my grandson says, "Oh, I learned about her in school." So, I think the really important thing about this museum is that it supports not only the curriculum of the schools, our new Tank Town exhibit now has a section that supports the curriculum of North Carolina, so that these children can come here and be in, and get information that supports the curriculum that's state-approved. It does, it has a lot of publicity for the town. People come here because of that. You know, every Saturday, it's free, and people are attracted to that, and, but they come in and experience Matthews from other parts of Charlotte that they might not have done, so. Now, we've had a lot of publicity about the new Tank Town exhibit, and I invite all of y'all to come and see that because it's an important part of the Matthews story that our Director Barbara has spent the last year finding out things, you know? It started from her thinking that was Freedmen's Bureau land, until she did the research and discovered, in fact, it wasn't. And so, it's an important story that needs to be told. We feature two important residents from there, Harvey Boyd and Walter Stewart, two young lads that grew up in Tank Town, or Crestell is known now, but those, one of those men designed Mecklenburg County's seal at the age of 19, and the other one went to California and was the road manager for Johnny Rivers. So, that area did in fact produce people that have impacted our entire country. I also serve as Dr. Reed sometimes at, when we do the Victorian Lawn Party or the Christmas teas, and so I would invite you to come and see what the museum offers. It is, this new exhibit will actually become permanent, so that we will add that to the Matthews story. I thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could make a comment? We have a number of folks here with the Historical Committee. Could y'all stand up so that we can recognize you and all your efforts that you put in? Thank you. Mr. Higgin, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I've gone to see the Tank Town exhibit, and it's really fantastic, and I want to thank you and all the docents for all the hard work. It's fantastic, very professional and very educational, and kind of moving to see the history of Matthews, so I recommend everybody on a dais and all the audience to go check it out, it's well worth your time.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is items to be added to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, two items. We are recommending an item be added to the agenda so we can discuss changing the first meeting in August from August 12th to August 5th. And the second item would be to remove 14E, which is the public art mural on the Malone Building. So those are the two recommendations.
Okay. So do we have a motion on changing the August, the first meeting in August to August...
No, we'll just add it to the agenda.
14G. 14G. So we have a motion to add that to the agenda as 14G?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of adding that to the agenda is item 14G, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then 14E, or excuse me, 14, yeah, 14E, remove 14E from the agenda and discuss that at a later time with committee.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that item? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So we have item 14G added to the agenda, and item 14E has been taken off the agenda. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is public comment, and we will ask that each individual come up to the podium, state your name and address. We have a limit of four minutes per person, and the first person on the list is an individual who has been involved in Mecklenburg Historic Landmarks for many, many years, and it's Dan Moore.
I really put my name on the list and probably didn't need to be there because I'm going to be presenting at Susskar House later.
Oh, okay.
Skip over it.
Okay, well, that's fine. You sure you don't want to say anything?
No, sir, I believe you're right, I have nothing to say.
Okay. Okay. Next person on the list is Mark Moore. Mark?
Thank you, appreciate this opportunity to speak. Mark Moore is my name. I work with Man and Nutrition and with Breakman's Coffee here in town. Unfortunately, I don't yet live in Matthews, but I'm trying to, so before long, hopefully, if real estate values permit, may move in your way before too long. I did something I never do, which is write down my remarks so that I can stay within your four minutes, but I will say I represent the Hysterical Society because I know how hysterical it can be to you guys to realize how dumb people can be when they come up with ideas. I hope this doesn't come into that category. I also say that on YouTube recently was the Seattle Town Council Meeting, or the City Council, where they all sat, and I've been watching you as each person spoke, and every one of you looking and listening, and it's just very impressive. I don't know if you've seen that video, but each Town Council member in Seattle was staring at their computers as one person after another spoke, and it really did, it shows the kind of empathy and the care of this committee. But I just want to say greetings to the town, to everyone who's here. First, a little background, I'm a community member, involved with two Matthews-based businesses, Man and Nutrition, Breakman's Coffee. Many of you may not know about Man, but we office in Jim Johnson's Griss Mill. Griss Mill's appropriate for us because we feed kids around the world, we supply the UN, the USAID World Food Program, Doctors Without Borders as one of the world's biggest suppliers of stuff called ready-to-use therapeutic food. There are five of us who office here in Matthews, we've been here about nine years, but we have a facility, a factory down in South Georgia that manufactures our food and ships it out all over the world. It's in about 60 countries right now, in places like Syria and Sierra Leone, and some of the toughest places in the world. So we're honored to be here in Matthews. And in addition to Breakman's, we hope you've stopped in and had some coffee with us, in which we, my wife Marnie, who's here, are owners with the Basden family, with the Johnson family, that came to speak on behalf of them. Prior to living here, my wife and I lived in East Africa for nearly a decade, then in the Washington DC area. We've been here now for nine years, and so this is about to be the longest we've lived anywhere. What brings me here specifically tonight is about a mural that is proposed to be put up at the Malone Building. I think art and poetry by their very nature are found to be compelling or boring, or inspirational, depressing, or brilliant, or mundane, all in the eye of the beholder. Some find Picasso to be genius, while others find his work to be oddball or maybe even offensive. Some love a particular movie or a song, and others hate it. Accordingly, to have me or others stand in front of you and petition the board regarding some particular impressions or opinions of the selected poem or artwork is completely subjective, and to do so is likely less than helpful to all of you. I can only say that I trust that those who came up with the idea of the soaker did so out of an honest perspective, and the process, and of those of us who find it inappropriate come from a similar sincere stance. I certainly believe that both camps want what's best for Matthews, and regardless of your choice, we'll be fine and go on with our lives. While I applaud the Parks and Rec Team for thinking about this, and in generally, I'm very supportive of the idea of murals, I do have the following observations. The space is perfect, the perfect canvas for a mural, but what's the ideal message for that particular space? I assume that likely tens of thousands of passerby's will see it every day, what do we want them to say to them? How do we want to make them feel? What do we want them to think about Matthews? The answer to this, of course, depends upon the opinions of a particular crowd you ask and what they happen to value. So there won't be a clear and easy answer, but I'd suggest that this space is too valuable not to have a transparent community discussion about the best strategic message for that specific spot. My opinion is that particular space should be directed towards messaging something about our town, but what we value, why we're different, a message about our history and about our character. We should carefully ask ourselves, what is it we want people to feel when they see this? Accordingly, in my opinion, in addition to meeting the general beautification goals of the Parks and Rec Team, whatever is put there should say, "This is a cool town, don't just drive by. Stop and see that we're authentic." The proposed flower, but the proposed flowers and the poem, in my opinion, say nothing specific about Matthews, and are not intentional messaging about what makes us unique or in the crowded landscape of Greater Charlotte. The poem is fine, but as I said earlier, like all poetry and art, ascribing any value to it will be subjective, yet regardless of whether one feels it's compelling poetry or messaging, we must ask ourselves the very practical questions, will people driving by have time to even safely read it? I think any traffic engineer or advertising expert would likely tell us no. So that can... So that can be our target, if passersby won't have time to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you.
Next individual who signed up is Greg Sharp, and Mr. Sharp, you have noted that you wanted to talk about the budget. Yes, that's what I was going to ask you, okay, that's fine, thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is recess the regular meeting for the public hearing on Item 10A, Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget, and Item 10B, Historic Designation of Property Known as the B.A.'s Stairhouse. Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So we are now in public hearing. So for Item 10A, we have the, as I said, the 2019-2020 Budget, and we have on the agenda the Manager's Message, the presentations that have been made to us, the Budget, CIP, and the Fee Schedules. So those were available to the public as input. I'll turn to the Manager, do you have anything that you would like to state prior to opening this up to the public?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I could do one of two things. We could open up to the public, or I could give a brief update on the presentation. The Board did see this once before, but we've made some changes as a result of the two work sessions that the Boards had.
Okay, it would probably be best to update the...
Okay, very good. All right, so this is a recap of the Fiscal Year 2018-19 Budget, but our current tax rate right now is 35 and a half cents. In this past year, the current year we're in, that'll end June 30th, we hired 10 firefighters and went to a 24-hour staffing model. We also implemented a pay classification study for our employees to make us more competitive in the market. We added four positions, and our fund balance did exceed 34%, which is our policy. And then in that budget, we did not appropriate any appropriated fund balance, so no money was budgeted in or out of our savings account. In this year's budget, we had some constraints going into it, or as part of our recommendation, which was to add four positions in the Police Department, that was as a result of a staffing study. The 24-hour staffing model, that was not fully funded. In this year's budget, we're showing it funded for 12 months instead of nine months. There's an increase in state retirement program that all cities, counties, and towns participate in. In North Carolina, that's an uptick of $120,000. Increase in health insurance costs, about $100,000, that's about a 3% increase, that's pretty reasonable. Then we've got a workers' comp and property liability increase of $38,000, and then solid waste fees, which include an increase in tipping fees, which are at the landfill. Consumer Price Index increase, and then an increased number of homes to be serviced, that's another increase of $175,000. So that's a total of $913,000 as new costs in the budget. We do have seven strategic goals that we are guideposts, we continue to use those as we go through the process. This budget does invest in our employees and the resources to provide a high-quality services to our citizens, which traditionally we've got a good track record of doing. I mentioned kind of the constraints in this next year's budget, and this budget does propose an increase of 1.87 cents to the property tax rate, which would bring us to revenue neutral, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more depth. So here's just a brief 10-year history of our tax rate, so we are proposing for 2020, next fiscal year, which would begin July 1st, to go to 28 cents. The increase, there's the increase, it's less than a million dollars to the budget, somewhere around $800,000. I think that's about a 3% increase to our budget. Here's where the revenue sources come from, property taxes 55%, sales taxes 14%, state share revenues 9%, and then other things like Powell Bill, which goes to pay for repaving of our streets, 22%. In the budget, we do have a 3% merit pool increase for our employees. As I mentioned, we have four new full-time positions, all in the Police Department. We have one part-time position in Parks and Rec to help with landscaping. And then we, of course, as I mentioned, we're fully funding the staffing model for Fire and EMS.